Amen. And to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, who art in heaven, dear Lord God, we thank you for all your many blessings you bestowed upon the citizens of Dillon. Dear Lord God, we ask that you continue to bless our mayor and our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and all the department heads as we gather here tonight to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything that we do, we pray that we help you give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise, but is it in Jesus' name to pray? Amen.
Amen.
We will go ahead and proceed. We may have a member, a council member come in in a few minutes. We got a note for him. I have a motion to approve the agenda. I'm in a call of favor. I oppose. I have a motion to approve the minutes from July 13th. Greg, let's get to me. So, I say, call there. I oppose. He just... See, I have, um, probably some of this is on yours, or, or you just tell me that you'd rather get to it, but I want to open. I know you had a section on the, in our package about the wellness center and the dogs. Again, I'll go ahead and break that up. Of course, I like, I go to Glenn a lot on things, cause he's deliberative, and that's good. He's a good listener, and then gets some very good feedback at times when...
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah. When I, or you can jump off the bat. But I was thinking of the track out there. There's really, that's kind of a tough decision on the dogs, if you want to allow dogs out there. But something came to my mind, we have two walking tracks. So, first of all, this, you know, what we're doing here would pertain to that one or both of them?
Well, I think if the ordinance are a member, frankly, is just describing the wellness.
Okay.
But then you also have, if you want to call it a waltzing area around 8th Avenue, Park, Arms Park on the side.
Yeah. I mean, I think we, you know, it's specifically talking about the wellness center.
In the ordinance, they didn't characterize that as a park.
Now, out there at the ball fields, that is a ballpark. So, I don't know, but what I was also, what came to my mind, you know, when you go to the beach, you can carry a dog out, I think.
After hours.
After hours.
On the leash.
At sunset, maybe, or...
On the leash.
By, I think five or something like that.
On the beach.
On the beach.
But it has to be on the leash.
And I was thinking, that might not be a bad, you know, fix here. A compromise on it, where you can still carry a dog out there. People know the hours. They're gonna be walking dogs, if they're scared of dogs, in designated times. So...
They're responsible for their deposits.
That too. I mean, just like, you know, that...
I mean, if you are at the beach, they catch at the beach.
But that was, that's just a suggestion.
Well, that's a good suggestion. Um, but you say after hours and after hours.
Well, I shouldn't have said after hours. So, maybe you can, you designate a six to eight, or five to seven, or something of that nature. Maybe you can put something down. This is nothing that has to be moved upon immediately. But, um, just a thought, I wanted to bring that up.
Well, to follow that thought, do you want to table what we have as first read? And we come back next month with some timeframe? Is there any urgency to doing this?
I'd like to see us table. I, I think we're rushing them back.
Okay, well, once you get to it, you can, you can decide how you want to handle that, and then we can discuss possible timeframes.
What are discussing?
I don't know that the wellness center property, we don't treat it as the same as we do the neighborhood parks, the dust the dome, or dome the dust hours. We don't, we don't treat the wellness center like that, because we do have people who walk out there. I mean, we put lights up around the tracks, so we warn them out there at night, or in early morning hours. So, we don't have the dome to dust timeframe out there. You also have somebody out there watching it a good bit of time, that, I mean, you know, it's at 4:30 in the morning. Yeah, normally 4:30 and close on normal time, Monday through Friday at 8:30. Doesn't mean that we have somebody outside, but we have people on the front. So, we'll, when you get to it in, in the new business part, we can go from there.
Also, in your package, I guess we'll come in too, where you're gonna get into Kenny Smith on the boys.
And you can deal with that now, if you'd like, sir.
Um, my, I got to know Kenny, came back, contractor overseas in Jacory. I met with their, you know, they were putting on a youth route at their church, at Manning Baptist Church. Uh, you know, that were a few years back, we were approached about a boys and girls youth center, and just never found how to do, who gets a location, or how to go about it. But I know they're asking, they have a day camp, and from what I have gotten back from them, and what I've seen firsthand, uh, those, and Maggie Riles is on that board with that. I noticed that. There's quite a few board members there, very good board members. I hope we will support that one-day event. Uh, if we aren't gonna take the lead on, somebody else has taken the lead on that, and really have done a lot of work thus far through the 501(c) and everything else they've done. It's kind of a process, it's a long process. But I hope council will support that one-day program with them, from a monetary standpoint. We can talk about how much we want to do, but, but I think that's the least we can do. It's kind of help them carry the ball to what they want to do next. Um, it certainly is a great cause with what they're doing, trying to empower these young men and women out there today in the neighborhood. So, I say give them a chance, and let's be a part of giving them that chance, and, um, and see where it goes. So, that's, that's my thought there.
I want to go ahead and discuss that?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to see us do that too. I personally already give them the contribution to it, and I'd like to see the city give it as well.
I agree. Um, we given funds for various projects. There, my tenure as mayor, quite often, and this is one of the, you know, this is right up there with some of the best I've seen.
You know, when I grew up, um, our, you know, we had club, not exactly like this, but we had it at the community center, you know? We got a, uh, this great area there that, uh, you know, some of the activity rooms that could serve us. They're asking for a place and all that, we got the nice community center. Well, ma'am?
Yeah.
I don't know if you can do that, because we do rent those things out of GP, and that is a, it rent you source for us. So, there, what they would be using it for would be something that they would want to place stuff in it?
No, what we're talking about this is just a one-day, September 26th, from 8:00 to 3:00 p.m. And each attendee, they say they're gonna have a tee-shirt, sport bag, educational, motivational reading material, as well as a breakfast and lunch, for all male youth of Dillon County. I would admit that. Um, as we were asking the Dillon City Council, Dillon Community Sports Workout Call, so that the Dillon County Boys and Girls Youth Center was sponsoring this event. I don't see where they're asking for any location, or the place posted.
I thought that it was like financial, especially this. Well, they, if I'm not mistaken, and I could be wrong, they purchased property beside Walmart, if I'm not mistaken.
Think they did?
The new one or old? The new one. Yeah. There was on, between Walmart and Interstate, the actual Interstate, there was an open area. They purchased that, I think from Walmart, probably a year ago.
Sure, sure.
At, at a reasonable price. So, they look, I think they've got the land, they just, once they can get enough monies, you know, as he, I think the stakes in that handout about breaking more. But I think what they're asking for now is just a funding source to help offset some of the costs for this particular one-day program.
Well, this is a great one-day program, but the agenda is just packed full of good things that male youth need to know today.
I think, I think I read, not in this, but somewhere, it's running at about $21 for this. I was suggesting it was $750 to $1,000 as a, as a one-time donation. Just to see where they're going with...
I'm not sure if we give a thousand.
All, all in favor?
I oppose.
Um, I'm gonna call on Richard Schaper's back here. Richard, I've told him I'd get him in front of the program today, in case he has something else to do. Um, Richard, I'm gonna ask you to come up here, if you don't mind, and let me tell you what Richard's here for. Those of you that know, we have on TV8, uh, the Dillon County segment, it's called Down Home Dillon. And we've had the Red Cross on before, and, you know, Richard met with some representatives of the American Red Cross, Glenn, and myself, and Maggie, at the Wellness Center, four or five weeks ago. Didn't know at the time that Dillon County is in dire need of volunteers with the Red Cross. In fact, the Wellness Center, did you call it an induction center?
Induct voluntary induction.
Voluntary induction center. They, and the Wellness Center is ideal for that, where you go get organized, uh, the logistics are done there, organizations done there. It's not a shelter, but it would be for, maybe they already own oxygen, or something.
That's through another, that's through D.A.
That, that, what does it mean, the standards? What was it?
Well, what, what, um, Richard is, we met with Richard and the Red Cross folks, people, is, well, if there's a disaster, either in Dillon County or surrounding area, as volunteers come in from out of state or within the community, this would be the first place they would go to be updated and tell, here's where we need you, this is where you need to go, this is what we got in place. So, that's all this would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the thing.
How much did it cost you? Um, but what got my attention is that, you know, we have ice storms here. We had one a year and a half ago. Of course, a hur, a hurricane, um, a tornado, one of them. They do a lot of house fires, I don't know where they was here, sir, the fire. Forty-five this past week.
We did forty-five last year, that's in Dillon County.
Here's the kicker, Dillon County has two volunteers. Does it, so, right now, if we had a disaster, I don't know how they could, we could host a shelter?
We would have to bring them in from other counties. Clark's, Orie, and Fother. We bring them in from other states than we have to. But that takes time. So, we're not addressing the actual incident. We're waiting on volunteers to come in from other places, and that's why it's critical that we have and end up trainees and volunteers to be trained to handle these things without bringing massive amounts of people in. And the other, the other benefit is, you're gonna know most of the people in these shelters, because they're from Dillon County. Uh, I, I got a horrifying deal the other day, they're reading statistics off. We have over 5,000 trailer houses in Dillon County. I knew it was a large amount, because we send school buses out during hurricane events to bring people in to the shelters with school buses. Obviously, that's under my tutelage. But, and I knew there were a lot of them, but I had no idea it was 5,000, did you? We got one district where they were seven hundred in it. But it's better to have people here onboard, trained, and in your community, taking care of your people, than to bring people in who don't know you, and don't know what to do. They don't know how to call Todd Davis, or Dr. Wallace, or Glenn, or Jack, or, they don't know. But, and that, that's the benefit of it, is to bring them in to the Wellness Center. We just sign them up, do their credentials, make sure the background checks are done, and once we've certified that their background checks are done, then we allocate them to wherever it is we're hoping. Dillon County, I guess, is blessed in this respect. Latta is a major center, calls a 501, coming from Myrtle Beach. Dillon and Lakeview have number nine, which are major evacuation routes. It takes a minimum of 18 people to open a shelter sufficiently for a hurricane.
Eighteen people.
Why I don't my shelter today, I can't do.
What would they be requiring to do?
Well, first thing you have to do is, is sign up to volunteer for American Red Cross. You go on AmericanRedCross.org, I'm gonna read all this right, I can't wrong. And, uh, the volunteer section there is where you sign up for American Red Cross. Once you get on there, it's gonna send you to another program, uh, called Volunteer Connection. That's where we end up, all of our volunteers, it's through volunteer induction. Now, once you sign up as a volunteer, request to be a volunteer, the Red Cross is gonna run a background check. And then they will notify me, once that background check's done, that this volunteer is cleared our, our program, and he's ready for induction. Then, we're gonna reassign him to a training program. And that, that can be one program, or it can be, I think I'm on my 70th program in training. So, there's a lot of areas for the Red Cross to operate. It is a whole lot more than, what do you think when you hear Red Cross?
Blood.
Blood's one part of a five-part deal. I mean, we do service to military servicemen, we're the number one contact of service personnel in the country. Uh, we do blood services. Disaster is massive. I think last year it had 70,000 activations for disasters in the United States. The, the one thing that I, I need to say, and I'll, I'll cut it short, I could talk all night, that's Dr. Wallace, and that's, my brother visits, and normally about school board of the Red Cross. Uh, we're 90% volunteers. I'm assigned to eastern South Carolina, out of Orie County. They handle all six PD counties. We have five paid staff members. Five to handle six counties. So, you can imagine, it's all about volunteerism, and we have to be trained to deal with it. I had to pass all kinds of programs to be here tonight, just to talk to you, and, and be certified to do that. So, it's all about volunteers. The other interesting fact is, it's all donated money. There is no governmental money involved in Red Cross. It's all donations, corporate, single-member donations. And we spend about 10% on paid staff, and 90% goes into the disaster programs. So, when you have a fire, it's not gonna cost you anything for the Red Cross to show up. We're gonna show up if somebody alerts us. And the fire departments in the city of Dillon are excellent. I met with your fire chief last week, and, uh, his crew, and they do an excellent job of notifying us. So, a member of the Red Cross will be there to deal with the occupants of the house or wherever. Uh, we're gonna supply rooms, food, clothing. We're gonna assist for a minimum of three days till they can get back to some state of sanity, as I call it, because it is a massively stressful situation when a house burns. And it gets worse if there's a fatality or an injury during that situation. So, you can imagine the stress levels that we're dealing with. But every person that activates for any kind of situation is very highly trained. So, and you can do as little or as much as you want to do. If you want to activate and go to Tennessee, uh, the number one volunteer here just activated last week or two weeks ago, and went to Tennessee and spent 10 days, was it Tennessee or Kentucky?
Kentucky.
Kentucky. He was in Kentucky for 10 days. You don't have to do that. You stay right here and there, believe, like me. But it, it's a massive organization. The United States has 500,000 Red Cross volunteers. So, and in Dillon County, I, it is my goal to put at least 40 to 50 volunteers in place, trained and ready to activate, if we have a problem. So, I can't say enough about the city and how, how great they've been with us. Uh, I've met with Todd, and Glenn, and Maggie. Uh, Maggie is, Maggie knows everybody. If Maggie don't know them, y'all don't know who you're gonna call. But, uh, they've all been wonderful. Dr. Wallace does one of our fundraisers for us. We've had two a year forever. And Dr. Wallace does one at the country club, and we do thank him, because that is the major...
That's the Methodist church that does that.
Well, the Methodist church, yeah, that's through Dr. Wallace. But, uh, it's, it's all volunteers and all donated money. So, you can do as little or as much, or, as you want to do. But, uh, that's how you, how you get involved, through the redcross.org site, go to the volunteer, uh, intake, you fill out all those forms. Believe me, now, there's a lot of paperwork. It operates just like the government. A lot of paperwork. But, uh, it's very fulfilling. Uh, I have enough to do without this, but I love, and I do a lot of, and, uh, it and my other part-time job, like I told them a while ago, keeps me pretty busy. But, uh, the schools are ready, uh, they've all been certified, we've got at least five that are up and ready to go. Uh, our one problem in Dillon County is, we don't have a generator system on the, and we're working on that. Your fire department has the only generator system I know. Would I be correct in that?
Anything to do with the city, other than out of wastewater plants.
Right, other than the wastewater plant. So, that's a major blessing and a major need. Every one of these hurricane event centers needs to be generator-equipped. If we can't cook, then we gotta go outside and bring vendors in to cook. And, uh, the Baptist Association, the Methodist Association, the Catholic Charities Association, all of those assist us with those kind of events. So, it's a great organization. If you're interested, go to redcross.org, tell, somebody, call Glenn and tell him you've signed up, or that you want to sign up, and if, once you've signed up and they've issued an okay on that background check, then you'll be turned back over to me for further training and assignments. So, uh, thank you, Glenn, thank y'all.
Like you said, it's kind of been a outreach program with this, with this show. Since then, I've had three calls to get in contact, that want to volunteer, and I think that ran for the first time, old Richard meet with, uh, fire chief, and, you know, firemen are volunteers already, they understand that, and you might have some success there. But I know there's quite a few people that, you know, when something, an ice storm comes, and you're sitting at home, and you aren't going to work, you get cabin, if you're ready to get out and get involved, to hell, well, that's, that's when you can do it. Uh, you know, Dillon's got two, and we shouldn't have to call all the other counties. We should take...
And Martin can't do a whole lot, me.
Well, you'll be hearing more about that when we get our... Yeah, it shouldn't be a, a big deal to get forth the... Thank you. Um, I think I want to, I want to bring, uh, I wish Johnny Eller was here tonight. I don't want to say any much without him being here. I know there's been some discussion, and I won't bring this up, I got a letter today from Tony McNeil. Um, there were some reports, reported that the golf course, I think, I quoted, has lost $600,000 since it's been opened. Well, I'm not gonna get into detail on these figures, but officially, if you look at a P and L statement, profit loss statement, from what was spent, the golf course expenses into revenues coming in, it's more like 349,000. So, I didn't want to say anything the other week about that, but...
That's over 27, 28 months.
Yeah, period. That doesn't include the contributions from the county. That doesn't include the contributions from the hospitality fund. That's, that's just...
Profit.
Straight profit loss statement, right there. It's a loss, no doubt, but it's not 600,000. Um, the only other thing that I didn't, again, I didn't say anything, I kind of had an idea when we designated that money from the county, that it was voted on. Uh, I know, again, Mr. Eller, um, questioned that. So, I, I wanted to see that, because that's a very important issue, of how that money was, was put to the golf course. And we researched them minutes, and for those of you that can't remember that, because I couldn't. Um, but, and I'll read the paragraph. "After the discussion, Councilman Wallace made the following motion, allocate $75,000 from the 2% hospitality tax fund, as startup funds for the golf course, and also to borrow $130,000 from the 2% hospitality tax funds, to purchase equipment for the golf course, with repayment terms of $2,300 per month for 60 months, that's 1.75% interest, or total of $205,000. With the possibility, we may have to borrow another $50,000 if the county does not allocate funds for the golf course. However, if the county does give funds for the golf course, this money would be placed in the golf course account for expenses. Councilman Bratty seconded the motion and it passed unanimously." I got this today from, um, Mr. Tony McNeil. I'm not gonna read all of it. He, Tony did a great job by, I'm not gonna read, our suggestions on the golf course, that I'm gonna give Glenn, and we're going, we're gonna look at that. But he wrote this, and I'll read it. "Dear, dear Mayor Davis, I hope you're doing well, and that you're in good spirit today. I recently read an article," I don't know where he read, "regarding the discussion that your council is having the possibility of closure of the golf course in Dillon, and I wanted to respond to your concerns from an economic development standpoint. As an economic development agency, I think we have done a fairly good job in attracting such industries as lawn and garden, uh, expanding industries such as harbor freight, tools, expert machine, diversified plastics, Dillon furniture, and so forth. We've also located retail establishments such as our eatery, such as Taco Bell, Popeye's here in Dillon, the retail restaurant development complements to industrial development as important as it adds to the quality of life in our community, and help us attract industry, which results in jobs and investment for our community. The same is true when it comes to terms of having a fully functional golf course in Dillon. As an economic development professional, I am, I am placed at a disadvantage when companies ask, where's a good place to eat, or where can we play around the golf? 90% of my economic, economic development deals are closed outside of the office, and they're in lax environment. In summary, I understand council's concerns from a revenue standpoint regarding the golf course. However, it is essential to economic development, quality of life for our current future citizens, as well as our current future industries, that we have a golf course in Dillon County and work with." He brought that by my office today, so I told him I was reading from his standpoint. Um, and lastly, you heard Richard bring up the fundraising, and what, how charities raised their money. A big part of that is the, the Red Cross.
I got a tournament that raises like 13, 14,000 dollars for the Red Cross, but 40,000 is church does, so it's a, to be...
I heard that Paul Chapman tournament out there raised 20,000. So, it's hard to replace that money you can raise if you don't have them. Uh, again, I'm not gonna say anymore on that, in respect to Mr. Eller, and I'll forget you. Last thing I have is a proclamation, which it pleases me to read. Uh, those of you that know, our young girls, uh, went to Louisiana and brought on the, uh, the World Series, they're champions. I think the first in, uh, in the history of Dillon.
That's right.
Uh, so, uh, we're gonna have an event for them. Glenn called me about it today, and I'll let him bring that up, this time, or another, at a more appropriate time. But I'm gonna read this. Uh, Dixie, the Dillon Dixie Darlings softball World Series Championship Day, Saturday, August 15th. Whereas the city of Dillon offers youth sports opportunities for children of Dillon in basketball, softball, soccer, volleyball, through its Department of Parks and Recreation. Whereas the city of Dillon Parks and Recreation Department has affiliated with the Dixie softball since 1997, played in various District III tournaments, state tournaments, and World Series in all divisions. And whereas the city of Dillon Dixie Darlings Division has won three Dixie Darlings state tournaments for the past three years. And whereas the Dixie Darling, Dixie Darlings did win the Dixie Darlings softball World Series Championship on August 15th, 2015. That's now, now, therefore I, Jay Todd Davis, there at the city of Dillon, along with the city council, hereby proclaim Saturday, August 15th, 2015, as Dixie Darlings..." city council, hereby proclaim Saturday, August fifteenth, twenty fifteen, as Dixie Darlings Softball Day. I encourage all citizens to join me in congratulating these young athletes and their coaches for a job well done. And with that, that's all I have.
Well, I'll follow up with that. We just kinda came up today with Kevin Scott and the coaches with that team, to do something to recognize these young ladies, uh. And Saturday is, is the day that we decided on, and they wanted to have a little parade. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna march down Main Street from the Train Depot to City Hall, uh, starting at ten o'clock. Probably in their uniform and with their World Series flag. They'll come to the steps, we have some, some keys to the city, which are little pins, about eighty, that, that hopefully the mayor will give to each participant. Because this would be a memory they'll never forget. Absolutely. Just to give you a little history, there's eleven states that compete in Dixie softball in this particular age group. At our district, there were ten teams in our district that played one another in a double elimination bracket, the winner then moves on to a state bracket. In the state of South Carolina this year for the eight and under girls, there were possibly a hundred teams that started at the sub-districts and district levels. There were eight teams that qualified at the state level, and there's, like I said, ten other states. So if you add up all the numbers, basically, it's close to three thousand teams who start out the first, middle of June, that start playing to get a chance to advance to the World Series. And all you have there is eight teams. So if you even make it to the World Series is, is, is a big deal. We've had, Bert coached the team, our first team that went several years ago, and we thought just making it to the state championship one year was the best thing that ever happened. So these young girls have accomplished a lot along with their coaches, and, and they take pride in it. One of the things that, that I'm passionate about is that when we built the sports complex, we had no place for girls to play. All, all the sports activity from baseball standpoint was strictly geared for boys. The girls could play, but it was strictly geared for boys. So one of the things when we did build the sports complex was that we wanted to make sure that we always had at least two fields for our girls' softball program, that they didn't have to take a backseat to a boys' sport. And, and that's something that we had accomplished, and you can see over the years, Douglas has been a part of it, with his children, our daughter playing it, that is, that's something that they take pride in. So it's, it's, I'm humbled, I wish I could have been there, Kevin Scott went on, on City's time, but, uh, it was a good experience, and, and they appreciate everything that City is doing, for them, it has cost us some money, but they, they not raised a lot of money to go to Louisiana. They were there from, really Thursday night of last week, uh, two weeks ago to Wednesday, I, I think one of your staff members, her daughter, three, oh, you had three.
Yeah.
That, that played on that thing. So it's, it's, it's a good community event, the girls have a good time.
They had a big time.
That they did. But the parade started ten at the Train Depot, they'll come up Main Street to the City Hall and have it on the text and the walk from here to there, and the mayor to say a few words that I hope that he will say, and present them to the kids in the city. And the big crowd to come out, show them the little things. They're not, you're just proud of them for what they have accomplished, winning the World Series, but proud of them for playing at sport and being involved. I'll leave it at that. Mayor, other than that, I've really not had anything, but I will bring up, back to the ordinance, this home of agenda, I was just jotting down some time thoughts. We could put in into the, the new ordinance, that dogs are allowed on the property from seven PM to seven, eight AM. That gives twelve hours.
On leash.
On leash, oh yeah, on leash, that would have to be on leash. But I think, you know, that would be an appropriate time. I don't know if any people are gonna walk, especially during the summer, you're walking the dog on hot asphalt in the middle of the day. So I think that would be an appropriate time. If that's what y'all think, we'll bring that back, that are needed some anymore. That's all I have at this time.
Uh, citizens report, any thing, anybody want to bring to our attention? If not, nothing, business we have none. New business, ordinance fifteen nine, which we just spoke about, providing dogs at the Wellness Center, so we're gonna bring that back.
Well, you need a motion to, to either pass it, decline it, or table it.
Have a motion to table that.
All of them?
All in favor? Any votes? Uh, council member, excuse me, Resolution six fifteen, Safe Workplace Commitment, have a motion to that?
I made a motion.
All in favor?
I, I.
Council member reports.
John?
I don't have anything. I'm good, I, you know, I just, um, you know, it, it upsets me when misinformation gets to the paper and, you know, people get an idea that it's not really well documented. I just wish that, you know, we could, we could put it up here with the information to share with the community and make sure that the facts are correct, the bullying, put them out there. That's all I have.
Don't worry about it, Bert, I just thought about this morning. One of the polls, right there, first thing, has been vandalized, it's got pink, I mean, is anything we can do about that? I don't, I don't even know if it's a gang sign or whatever.
That's been there, that's been there about a year.
I know, I noticed it when I dropped my deposit, I put it in, I don't think about it.
Have you contacted Duke Inn or do you run it through that handling?
It's been, at least a year or so. Look, I don't know, I just dropped my deposit this morning and noticed, I said, come on, make it. That's all I have.
We have an executive session.
We have a motion to.
We're going together.
That's a practical matter. Thank y'all for coming.